I'm not gonna miss this.
It looks like a wall in front of you.
Oh, I didn't bring my, I didn't bring my computer.
I don't, let's start the meeting and then I'll tell you what I think.
Okay, we're, we're gonna be in session in a second.
Go ahead.
Calling to order.
Is this tape?
Yes.
Yeah, so you might wanna...
There, watching you plug it in.
Oh, can we turn...
Well, first thing on the agenda is call to order. And is there any change in the agenda tonight? Any additions, subtractions, or changes? I'd like to add one thing, and that's to appoint a new vice chair. Yes?
Um, no, go ahead. Let me see, I will speak. I just, I don't know if tonight is the night to do that. We have a lot to do. I don't know.
Okay, then we'll pass it on that. Okay, next thing is finalize the interview questions. You want to understand this order is not the order that we have to stay with. Okay, yes?
If you want, I'll just summarize what everybody's looking at.
Okay.
So, in our last meeting, we had discussed different questions we'd like to ask under categories, and we had assigned different questions to board members to work on, and Cody as well, and everybody took the chance to email me their questions. This is the final list of questions I received from everybody. So, what we need to do tonight is decide if we want to ask these questions, decide the order of the questions, if this is not acceptable, and also determine who is asking which question.
Any questions? Yes?
Another question, I just wanna...
Go ahead.
Well, alright, questions. Number one appears to be like it should be number one. Tell us why you want, why you wanna work here. I'm confused by number two. It seems to be a complex question, it seems to be an involved question, and it was obviously your question, so...
I can speak to this question.
Okay.
So, this, a very similar question was used by the superintendent...
Chief.
Church committee, thank you. And this question, I'll read it and then discuss it, just for people who are watching along. "How do you define student success in a complex and changing world? What are the key skills, experiences, and beliefs with which every student should graduate high school, keeping in mind the wide range of student abilities?" What I think we're really trying to get to here is, first of all, how do we know when a student is successful? How does this candidate define student success? And what skills they should have, keeping in mind that, you know, not all students are at the same level, not all students have the same skills, not all students have the same interests. So, it's really kind of, I don't wanna say it's a question about differentiation, but it really is a question about individual students being successful versus, you know, a question about a group of students. I don't know if that makes any sense. But it's a tough question, but I think they're up to it, and I would hope that if you're applying as a superintendent, you're gonna be able to, you know, I'll read it slowly, whoever is reading it could read it slowly, really understand, I don't know, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Yes, Megan.
I think it's fine. I think, only if I were to edit it, I would just say, "How do you define student success?" You know, I mean, the context is clear, we are, I mean, I don't know if we need to spell it out, you know. I mean, what are you trying to say that the...
No, I, yeah, that's fair, because then we will determine if they talk about success terms...
Right.
...changing based on future trends, or success is always success. So, I guess, I would be fine with that. I don't wanna, you know, a lot of these questions, I think we don't wanna leave the candidate somewhere. We wanna find out what they really believe.
Right.
And maybe this is leading them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that question will be number two, and how do you define student success?
What about the second part?
And then the second part, I think is fine. I just, I just thought take out that phrase in the first un, first sentence.
Good question.
Henry?
Yes?
Either we, process has got to be plural, or we need to change have to has.
Are we on number three?
Yep.
Henry?
Yes.
So, number three is the curriculum question. That was one of the things we discussed in our last meeting, that we believed curriculum should be something we should be specific about. And it seems like in this question, not only we're asking about curriculum, but we're asking to see what's coming down the pike and how they're gonna be prepared for that with Common Core standards, which I think is great, but let me see, please share what process helps... Processes probably, right?
Yeah. It is. Okay, good for that.
Number four?
Wait, so does every, is everybody comfortable? I mean, this is our one curriculum question. This is our opportunity. I don't mind asking the first two since I wrote them.
Number one and two?
Yeah. Does, I mean, I think we're all gonna have to take more than one, clearly, thirteen questions. Anne, since you were assigned with curriculum, do you wanna ask that question?
Sure.
Number four, I'd like to ask, ask that one.
Can we, okay.
Do we wanna change it? This is our strategic plan question.
I think Henry can ask this one.
Is the question acceptable?
Yes.
Alright. And anyone should feel free to jump in with comments.
Who's taking three, Anne?
Yes.
Who, may I ask about number five? Who wrote number five?
I did.
It seems a little bit redundant with number two, to me.
Um, it's, it's important because of, um, two of these candidates don't come from New Hampshire. And while in New Hampshire, we know that curriculum frameworks are being rolled out for testing in 2014, we don't know that for Vermont and Maine, or you might. And so, I would like to know from the candidates that aren't from New Hampshire, are they prepared to do this? Or what have they done to establish that they are prepared to do this? Or are curriculum, core curriculum even been adopted by their state? If they know nothing about it, they have a little catch-up to do.
Yeah, but core curriculum is mentioned in number three.
Core curriculum in number...
I just, I just...
Megan's talking about number five.
I think we have too many questions.
Oh, you're talking about number five?
I'm gonna say that right now.
Yeah.
I'm talking about number five. I think number five is, is, please discuss what educational models or instructional practice that you find best needs student needs, and then before that...
Well, that could be a follow-up to three.
I'm sorry, number two, it's, it's sort of, I think it touches on two and three. Actually, you could ask that and eliminate two and three, I think, but that's all right, I don't know.
I suggest you leave five in it, because we've spent a fortune on differentiated instruction, so I hope somebody touches on that.
Okay, that's fine.
And that's, that's the intent of the question, is to see, do they, are they, RTI and differentiated instruction, are those things that are at their fingertips or not?
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Let me push that question towards the end of the list. It's very similar.
I think they're, I think that's gonna come out in their answers on two and three, to a certain degree.
If it doesn't, we can, we can skip the question.
Yes, Justin.
What we could do is move five down to the bottom, and if we haven't heard any answers that talk about differentiation, heterogeneous classes, if we haven't heard those kind of buzzwords, then we can ask it. But hopefully, we will have.
So, move five to below thirteen.
And then who, Anne, you wanna ask it?
Oh, that's good, yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to make a question at number six.
We're on five.
No, actually, we did, we did five.
Oh, who's doing five?
I am, but we're moving to the end of the list.
Oh, no, but the new five. Oh, sorry, you guys are on paper. Forget it. I got it, sorry.
Cold fingers and waking you up.
It says, "Explain the process you use in developing a district budget and how you go about selling the budget to the board, the community." I wanna get rid of that word, "selling." That's, I don't think that's what we wanna do. Presenting, I think would be a more, a slightly more positive.
Or could you put getting...
Consentence or...
Community buy-in?
I don't wanna, you just, how, the process you're developing a district budget, how you're gonna present it to the community.
That's fine.
You know, I'm just saying that we don't, we don't wanna, we don't have to sell anything.
Well, we, sometimes we do.
Our souls appear to be, I think we've been selling.
Well, may I ask, say something?
Yes.
I think, again, you could even shorten this further. I think the shorter, they allow them, you don't wanna lead them and say, "Explain your process for developing a budget." And within that, that individual could say, "Well, I try to get stakeholder buy-in, blah, blah, blah."
Good.
So, I think just eliminate everything after "and" and end it there. That's my suggestion.
And let them expound on it, let him expound on it.
Does everyone, do everyone agree?
And who's asking that question?
Sounds like Jim is. Jim?
I, I added number seven. Explain how you use data to make decisions about programs being considered as additions to modifications or deletions from the budget. This is kind of a hybrid question. I think it's a follow-up to the budget question.
How about just, how do you, I'm sorry.
But I think it's also an important question, because it's gonna reveal the sort of framework that this person uses for making tough decisions. And I, I think that's important to understand.
I think we need to do the same thing, shorten it. How do you use data to make decisions? You don't, they can talk, "Well, I use data to make decisions about, you know, class, you know, classes, curriculum, staffing." You don't lead the answer. Keep it broad.
Or how about, do you believe in using data, and how?
Okay, edge your buzzword. Data-driven instruction, so I mean, that's something...
That's a specific thing, though. That, I would like to hear that. I wanna, I'd rather leave it broad.
She's right.
So, how, explain how you use data to make decisions. They don't, I seriously doubt, anyone's gonna say, "I don't use any data." I mean, no one's gonna say that. I mean...
Miss Krista?
You know.
Should we just put budget decisions, or you want all decisions?
I think any decision, because data could be used, it would be interesting, 'cause I think some people would, it would be interesting, it will give insight into their leadership style. Do they use data to make decisions about structure, staffing, or do they use more qualitative information? I think we could learn a great deal about a candidate by leaving that open-ended more.
Should we combine that with the, with number six?
No.
Okay.
Because, like I said, it could be not just for budget, it could be for other structural, organizational considerations as well.
Do you want Jim to ask a question?
Do you wanna ask a question?
I'll, I mean, if you wanna mix it up, I'll ask that one.
Okay.
I like it short.
That's good.
Less is more.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna see how they interpret things, I think, it's important.
Number eight.
Is this yours?
Um, just, okay, mine is, I'm gonna read it so people at home can, "Describe for us your management style and working with others. How do you help focus goals into an action plan, or action plans?" This is one that we met with Nezdeck on Friday. He helped formulate, so...
Are you gonna ask that question?
I can ask that one. I can do...
Two for...
I'll do two in a row.
So, Megan.
Okay, Cody, we got to you.
Yes, Justin.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so I received this question from Cody.
What does student involvement and decision-making look like at your previous schools, and how would you incorporate student input in the Oyster River Cooperative School District?
You satisfied?
Yep.
I think it's good.
Do you mind asking it? You probably want to.
Yeah, sure.
And, yeah, I think it's probably in a good place. Do you care where it comes in the questions?
No, that's fine.
Okay, good. Number, Henry, number ten is mine. What is your approach to professional development? How do you assess teachers, and what mentoring strategies have you had success with? I think this is gonna be on the minds of a lot of people who are gonna be working for the superintendent, so this is a little long for Megan's taste, I think.
What about Krista?
Oh, I saw her.
Krista, okay.
Number ten is Krista.
Eleven's a long one.
I'll ask it.
Do you wanna read it first?
"How would you take our district, a great district, and make it even greater in the face of declining enrollment, increasing community demand for enhanced programming, and stagnant resources?" Stagnating resources, I think.
I don't, may I ask what you mean by stagnating resources? Stagnating? How about, I thought, I think maybe limited resources?
Yeah.
Stagnating has a connotation that, has a very bad connotation, I think. I think it's limited would be better.
Okay.
You, you said you're gonna ask that one?
Is she gonna ask it?
I am.
She said she will.
Okay.
Plus, I've got three now, not too many.
Who wants to ask that one?
So, why don't I read number twelve? And I can't remember where twelve came from. This might have come from me. I think it came from our discussion. "How have you reached, how have you reached out, how have you reached out and how will you reach out to the community to welcome participation? And how will you leverage our vast community resources, including our residents, businesses, and UNH?" It's a big question. It's a big interview.
I think it's a good question.
This is our community question. You know, I think a lot of community members will wanna...
Do you wanna, Henry, you only have one, you wanna ask that one? I think it's a great question.
Do you want me to?
I'll ask it. So, that's to a twelve. Who's, who's gonna do number eleven?
I am, Anne.
Anne.
Anne, are you doing twelve?
Yeah.
The next one I'll do.
Krista, you will?
Yeah.
"How have you worked through conflict resolution when there is disagreement?" I, I don't wanna end on a sour note. Maybe we shouldn't...
Well, no, five's the last one.
Five, I have to...
But we may not do five.
But we may not ask five.
Yeah.
So...
Well, we, well, the question we asked during the screening committee is, "Share with us, bless you, one to three of your greatest accomplishments."
Oh, do we wanna do that?
If we have time. Well, we did, we based that question...
I think this question is important, though, so I think we need to move it up a little bit so that we can get an answer for it. For this, I mean, for this go-around, I think it's important.
Well, why don't we move it to place of five, and move five to thirteen? So, we just moved to those two numbers.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Do we, do we, let me ask, so, do we wanna ask kind of a question at the end that allows the candidate to summarize or cite? I mean, we don't ask, kind of, I mean, this is not, we don't have, like, some generic interview questions, like, what are some of the things you most, what were some of the biggest challenges and obstacles you ever came? What were some of the, you know, we're not asking anything like that. Do we feel that needs to be at the beginning, maybe modify, I don't know. I just feel those are some, usually you ask, you know, what were some, what do you consider your greatest strengths? What are some of the biggest, you know, challenge?
But some of that, some of that will come out in the answering of some of these questions.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just wondering if we're missing some basic overall, overarching...
You might have some questions of us. Yes.
I think, I think Megan brings up a good point. That's a key question, you know, I'm coming at this, I've already been on the screening committee, so we've already seen the questions like that come through, but maybe the board wants to see that. Maybe the public will wanna see the answer to that question. We had, you know, your, your greatest accomplishments and why. I mean, it's a great intro question. Now, I'm getting a little concerned about time.
You could just add it to the first question and say, "Why do you think you're the right candidate?"
Okay, okay.
What strengths?
And...
Like, what strengths will you bring, yeah?
What strengths and experiences can you bring to our district?
Good job. All right, thank you, Cody.
Cody and I work well, yeah.
Where do you wanna put that?
Training. What strengths and experiences will you bring to our district?
Yeah, so, we'll say, "Please tell us why you're applying for the superintendent position at Oyster River." What, you're gonna say, "Please elaborate," or, "What, what strengths and experiences will you bring to the district, to our district?"
Who's asking that one?
Jocelyn.
Actually, maybe, Henry, should, I, how many do I have?
I can only have one.
You have two. I think it's...
I have possibly three, so I could give one of them up.
Okay. I'll do that, then. I just wanna make a couple other comments, Henry.
Krista?
Answering number, asking number two.
Jocelyn.
I am.
Number, okay. He's asking one end.
So, maybe we should go through and make sure...
Jim, how about you take what became thirteen? If we get to thirteen, you ask it. Which was original number five?
Okay.
Yeah, but...
And then I have two, and everyone has two.
Okay. But, may I ask, Jim, do you know, you don't have to ask that question, though.
Cody's name somewhere. That must be Megan's. I have your name by two questions.
But if, you don't need to ask the new number thirteen if it's already been, will you be able to understand whether or not it has to be asked?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
That's why I'm concerned about Jim.
You're just gonna give him a sign, Megan. Ask the question, Jim.
No, I don't, do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
Yes. Here, I can help, Henry.
Yes.
So, when we did this on the screening committee, we often found that candidates answered the question before it was your turn to ask the question. So, if that's happened, you know, you just say, "You've already touched on this in a previous answer. Can you elaborate if you think it's important that they add a little more," or just skip the question. I mean, if, if the person has, some of these are so specific, I doubt that they have. But if they have, just, you know, and you know that, just say, "I, you've already answered my question, thank you." The other thing, I just wanna take a minute and look, so, best-case scenario, we have twelve questions here, and we have an hour. In the screening committee, did we have eleven questions in forty-five minutes?
We did, and we, and we usually had plenty of time.
And we did. So, I think that whoever sets this up, whether that's you, Henry, or someone else, we need to start off by saying, "We are going to interview you, we have an hour to interview you, we are going to lead you through a series of twelve to thirteen questions, and when we're out of time, we're out of time." So, we can, you know, we can have someone be a timekeeper and remind them when they're halfway through, or maybe who's ever on the question, when they're halfway through, needs to make a point of that. But I think we really need to warn them ahead of time. We're not gonna go into an hour and a half. We wanna get to every answer, so please, you know, keep, they're not gonna see the clock. Does anyone have a suggestion?
I have on my computer.
Yes.
I think it's important, I think last time when we did the interviews for the principal search, we asked a lot of follow-up questions on each question. And I think it's important for us not to do that this time, unless, of course, we feel like they're really not answering the question. If they're avoiding the question at all, then it's important to ask a follow-up question. But all of these questions hold significant importance. So, if we continue to ask follow-up questions on every single question, we're not gonna get to the questions at the bottom. And perhaps the better way to do it is if we get through all the questions, then you can ask follow-up questions. But I don't think that we need to ask a ton of follow-up questions.
Yes.
How important, I can't remember, but what is, do we need to allow, allocate time for the candidate to ask us questions? Do we need to try to finish at least, you know, no? I don't know. I don't know what was recommended.
We seem to have time when the candidates for the principalship, we had time on every single one of them.
We have one question, yeah.
Yes.
Just, just to continue on, I totally forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, oh, okay. If we decide on these questions, and then at a later time, the board decides that on candidates one and two, we need to have this follow-up information, then that's information that needs to be discussed at our meeting on Thursday, and needs to be discussed and determined whether we do more interview. I mean, if we end up on all of these with more questions than answers, then we have to decide how to deal with that and how to get those answers, and what process it's gonna use. So, but, you know, we can't use two hours tonight. So, if we decide we need more data, we're gonna have to do that another time, and come up with a plan for all candidates, or whatever. Whichever candidates need a preparation.
In witnessing his meeting with some of the, the people at the middle school today, or the, yeah, the middle school, there'll be no shortage of him filling in the blanks. I mean, he, he will tend to expound, and if anything, we're gonna run short of time very quickly.
Yes.
So...
Perhaps the person, when we have run through half an hour, when we, when we are fifty percent done with time, whoever's asking the next question at that time should just serve as a reminder. By the way, we have half an hour more. And if we feel like we're not going fast enough, I would say a fifteen-minute reminder as well, unless we're on track, and then I think regardless, we have to warn them halfway through. So, if you're on that question, it doesn't have to be exactly, if you forget, I'm gonna ask it, I'm gonna mention it the next time. The other thing that I think is really important is before we, one of the questions we were asked on the screening committee is, "Where are you in this process?" So, I think it might be helpful as an intro to these interviews, if one of us, and I would be happy to do it as a member of the screening committee, gives a brief background of what's happened to date. So, you know, we, we welcome Mr. McIntyre to the room, and then, you know, I would be happy to say, as a member of the initial screening committee, I'm gonna update the public and also Mr. McIntyre on where we are to date, the steps that we've taken, and what the next steps are.
Good idea.
Okay, but what about introducing him to the television audience? His, his background, stuff like that?
No, that's, that's, he's gotta answer that, and he's...
Right. We're not gonna read it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're just welcoming and don't fill in the blanks for him.
So, if I could make a recommendation, it would be, if the board agrees, if this makes sense, I'd have you, you know, welcome him, you know, welcome him, I might, to have a seat. Say, you know, we have a series of questions, twelve, twelve to thirteen questions we're gonna ask you, we have an hour, and, you know, we don't have additional time, so we're gonna remind you halfway through. Before we begin for our questions, we're just gonna have a brief update on the process to date, and I wrote down some notes, and I would be happy just to kind of read it, because I think he's probably gonna have that question, and the people watching this are gonna have the question of where we are. And, you know, I can cover very briefly our work with Nezdeck, the focus groups, the screening committee, the first round of interviews, that each candidate will be visiting the schools, will be doing a community forum. Mr. McIntyre's the first candidate to do that, he's done all those things today, and we'll be doing the other two candidates tomorrow, and then on Thursday, the board will be meeting to determine what steps are appropriate going forward, whether that includes additional interviews, site visits, or election of a superintendent, so I can...
So, you're gonna let, can we, let her do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, boom, you know, now let's begin the interview, and that's why I can ask the first question.
Very good.
And I'll already be done.
I have a request.
Yes.
I think we should keep our laptops closed during the interview. It looks like a wall between, I just think it, I mean, obviously Wendy has keepers up, she's thinking, I just think it makes a better impression.
But I didn't write anything down, so I put it all on my computer.
Okay. If you, I mean, obviously, that's the only means of, Krista, that's the only means of recording, that's fine. I recognize that. I, I mean, I'm using the sheet that we were given by Nezdeck, so, I brought that, I'm using mine. I thought that's what we were supposed to do.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yes, does everyone have a copy in their packet of the...
It's yellow, but I made copies, so I could have three.
Can we just go over this briefly?
Yeah, could you give one to Cody maybe, and then I'll make an extra copy, all right?
If you want, I can just run out of the library and copy.
Does everyone have a copy?
What time does this interview start?
I think we should all use this, 'cause this is...
Yeah, I'll go make some.
Could I make a couple copies, please?
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody. Which one is it? Is it candidate one?
Can we, 'cause we're running out of time. Can we go over the orders that we asked, that we assigned, that...
We are running out of time.
Yeah.
We're out of time.
The first question is Jocelyn, second question's Jocelyn, third question is Anne, fourth question is, is me.
Well, say again, please. First question is Jocelyn.
Jocelyn, Jocelyn, Anne, Henry.
Okay, five is, we'll move down to thirteen.
That's right, and Anne will do that question if need be. Jim has...
No, Jim will do that question.
Oh, excuse me. Jim is number six.
Right.
And you're number five, so...
So, the new number five is the old thirteen, and that's Krista.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The old, the old thirteen is the new five, and Krista's asking the old thirteen, which is the new five. And then the next question's the budget question, number six.
Who's gonna ask that thirteen?
The new thirteen?
The new thirteen.
Jim.
Jim will ask it.
But he'll only ask it if necessary. It may not need to be asked.
I have on my page a five, which was, "Tell us what educational models, instructional practice you find best meets student needs." That is now number thirteen, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, Henry, it's six fifteen.
Seven is Megan. Eight is Megan.
Yep.
Agreed?
Yes.
Then we have Cody.
Yes.
Number nine. Number ten is Krista's.
Yep.
Number eleven is Anne's.
Right.
Number twelve is Henry's.
Correct.
Right.
And then thirteen is Jim.
Fifteen is...
Thirteen is who?
You again, your last one.
Does anybody want, is it appropriate to put in any questions about special education?
That, that will come out of, we've got covered, thanks. There's just some questions we ask about reaching every child, every, every usual learner, and so, we're not gonna let them...
All right. It's just that there's two models that we use now, you know, with the high school and the middle school.
Yeah, but that's a different...
Okay.
Okay, I will keep the clock.
Okay.
Are you doing minutes, Wendy? Is that why you've been driving?
Who again?
Hmm?
Someone's walking in.
Jocelyn went up.
Jocelyn went...
Jocelyn went to get him.
Oh. Get it here. That should make it a body break. That should make it a body break.
Megan, would you take Jocelyn's name and turn it so that the candidate can see it?
All right. Is that good?
Yeah.
Our side is organized.
Ours was first.
I just don't know, this, I can't, I don't think I can fit all my comments in this.
I know. I don't know. Did questions, a couple of questions get uploaded?
I think so.
Is he not here?
No, he's in the library chatting, probably couldn't get...
Oh.
Off the library.
Oh.
He's good crowd.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, that's right.
No, I'm not going to.
Can we not, do we have to keep all of this in our papers? I suppose leaving us in prayer is not a good idea.
No.
Well, it's purple.
Not yet.
It will be. I think we're going to scare away kids. Temperature is right.
I know, it's cold. I don't know why it's so cold.
They usually wear suits on...
And they don't, they don't know.
I almost said thing in the library.
It's supposed to end now.
It's an hour?
Yeah. Here we go.
Welcome, this is Mr. McIntyre, he's here, fresh off the community forum, and...
Hi, nice to meet you, Megan Turnbull.
Hi, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Yes, yes.
I know.
Can you get me one?
Hi, Krista.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, thank you. We love to see all of you. Turn off the phone for embarrassing, right?
We all need to do that, right?
Yeah. What we've done, we've come up with thirteen questions that we'll ask you, and it'll be different people from the board asking the question. We want to keep everything down to an hour. And we're going to remind you at the halfway point.
Okay.
And that way, if you're discussing something and we're not at the halfway point, we're going to speed it up a little bit.
Sure.
Okay?
Thanks, Cody. This is Cody Jacobson, he's our student rep.
How's it going?
Okay. First question tonight is going to be asked by Jocelyn.
Okay, welcome, thank you so much for being here. Before I begin with the first question, I'm just going to spend a few minutes updating everyone about the process, where we're at in the process, and also for you to understand how we've come to this place. First of all, the board has enlisted the help of the New England School Development Council, Nezdeck, to assist us in this process. Nezdeck has conducted over four hundred searches. We're working with Dr. Candy Benedictus, and he's worked on over forty searches. We started this process by having Nezdeck conduct a series of focus groups, and I know it's come up in previous... We've discussed that you've read the focus group data available in our, on our website. The screening committee developed, or created by the school board, used this data to come through all the, all the applications that were received by Nezdeck. The screening committee was made up of staff, community members, we had a student. And this committee reviewed every single application that was received for this position. This committee conducted a series of interviews, and recommended that three finalists move forward. And congratulations, you're one of those finalists this evening. These three finalists will be going to each school in our district this week, and will be doing community forums, just like you did, and participating in school board interviews such as this. We will be doing the other site visits and interviews tomorrow in community forums. And then on Thursday, the board will be meeting to determine what next steps are appropriate. And at that time, the board will be reviewing the input we've received from all of the groups that you've been meeting with, reference checks. We'll have our interview data, and we'll determine what's appropriate to move forward. That could include site visits, it could include additional interviews, it could include electing a superintendent. So we'll be meeting on Thursday, and on Friday, there'll be an update, I will assume, so everybody will know what the next steps are. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and ask the first question for tonight. Please tell us why you're applying for this position, and what strengths and experiences you can bring to our district.
Well, Oyster River provides a great opportunity for a superintendent. You, your, your students and faculty and administrators with the leadership of the board have created a, a well-recognized model through the state of New Hampshire. As I talk to other superintendents and meet with other people around the state, Oyster River is a place that people talk about, about these are people that are doing it right. And they've done it right for a long time. And even as, as they talk about, about some of the current frustrations that you're experiencing, the people that I talk to say, they'll get through it. They always do. They are committed to students and to learning and to doing what's right for kids. And this is the sort of district where a superintendent has an opportunity to help students move to excellence, whatever that means for those individual students. As far as my background, my background is very, is very diverse. And I've learned different things from all of the various things that I've done. I've been a teacher of students with disabilities, I've been a teacher of students with gifts and talents. I have been a coordinator of gifted programs, I have been a district-wide director of special education services, I've been a lobbyist on Capitol Hill, advocating for students with gifts and talents and those with, with learning, with educational disabilities. I've been a CEO of, of a professional association of several thousand members. I've worked briefly in the State Department of Education, I don't recommend it. I have ran large federal grants, a couple of them, one in disability education, one in, in gifted education. I've been a superintendent of schools in two different districts, and I've learned something different from each of those things I've done. I've worked at a national research center in, in education. I've done a lot of things, but it, it all takes me, it all takes me to this opportunity. I, I intend to be a superintendent for the rest of my professional career. One of the things that I, that I bring to you is that I'm not going anywhere. I don't see retirement on the horizon. I think that, that changes in leadership are costly, not only in money, but in a lot of other ways. I have a young family. I don't want to be moving my young family any more than necessary. But I want to be in a position in which I'm in a, a system where, where students can excel, including my own children, and to get to know a community and stay with that community, and be able to contribute over an extended period of time.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask one more question. How do you define student success? What are the key skills, experiences, and beliefs with which every, every student should graduate high school, taking in mind the wide range of student abilities?
I think student success can only be assessed by looking at individual students. There are, there are students for whom individual success is a, is a singing career. There are students for whom individual success is going on to a tier-one university. There are students for whom success is getting gainful employment. That, that may not make them a wealthy person, but may allow them to be a contributor to society. It's really individual. One of the things I've said a lot today, as I've talked to people, is that we sometimes make the mistake of talking about children as though they are all the same. And we talk about having all children succeed. I, I'm, I don't like that. I like to talk about each child succeeding. So I think when the question about student success is, we have to ask Cody in a couple of years whether or not he got what he needed from our school system. We have to be able to, to look at every individual child, and whatever their aspiration is, we should be seeking to increase their aspirations and to give them the knowledge, skills, and tools for them to achieve their own aspirations. And only by measuring them against their own aspirations can we determine if there's been student success.
Right, thank you.
Ann, would you ask the next one?
Thank you for coming this evening, and you're surprisedly will look well-rested. You've had a long day. My question is, please share what processes have been defined in your district to bridge the current curriculum frameworks to the rollout and implementation of the Common Core state standards?
We're not as far along as we, as we should be, or could be. I had a conversation, boy, I think it was just yesterday, it does seem like a long time ago. We had an administrative team meeting, and we talked about, about the professional development time that we have left this spring, and we talked about how each of the three districts... I have three different districts, they have three different boards. And the directions that the boards have given and the directions that the administrators live under are different in each of the three schools. So it's not surprising that they're all in different places. We talked about having a common SAU-wide event to talk about Common Core, and found that in the three buildings, their, their level of awareness and preparedness is so different that having a, a common meeting was not going to be effective. That's one of the, the advantages of an Oyster River, is having one board to provide leadership, you can go in a single direction. I currently have three boards and a joint board, and they, they often are not just pulling in four directions, because each of those boards has a majority and a minority opinion on almost everything. So it's very hard to give any single answer about where SAU thirteen is, because they're, they're going in three different directions.
Thank you. I'd like you to discuss your experience helping a district formulate and execute a strategic plan.
I haven't actually led such a process from beginning to end, but clearly it's something that you are, that you, that you need to undertake. What I would do is, I would start by identifying someone with expertise in developing strategic plans. This is similar to a lot of other things that sometimes superintendents do. Sometimes superintendents are asked to develop a facilities plans. Unless you have a particular background, you're operating outside your area of expertise. What goes into the strategic plan, I can give a tremendous amount of input to, because I know how to help schools improve. But the strategic planning process itself, I would want to bring in someone that has that expertise to help chart the course, and then I would be happy to lead the process once that course has been charted.
Very, thank you. Jim, number six.
Could you explain the process you use in, in developing a district budget?
Sure. I think the only way to develop responsible budgets is to use zero-based budgeting. So in each of the districts where I've been superintendent, that, that had not been prior experience. And I found it really frustrating that I would look at budgets going back five years, and the line would be the same from year to year to year. Or you would see that the line went up five percent year to year to year. And that would tell me, nobody really looked very carefully at these lines. They're using a formula to create a budget, and that's no way to create a budget. So what I ask each department head to do is, start with a clean slate. You start with students. How many students do we anticipate having at each grade level? What do we know about those students? What do we know about their needs? If the, if we need more staff, then there ought to be a reason because of students. If we need less staff, there ought to be a reason because of going back to students. I, I find it frustrating that some districts say, each classroom teacher gets $200 to buy supplies with. Well, we have a classroom teacher that I, that I can think of in one of the districts that I don't think has asked for anything in two years. Because he's been there for a while, he's got everything he needs. Other than, you know, workbooks and things like that, he doesn't need anything new, and he's not asking for anything new. But if you get a brand-new teacher who's come and, and taken over the classroom materials of someone, someone else, that they, I would expect them to have higher budgetary needs for the first couple of years until they build what they need. So a zero-based budgeting approach, you start with the students that you anticipate having next year, and their needs, and you don't, you shouldn't be getting common amounts of money if you don't have common needs.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Explain how you, you use data to make decisions.
I wish that I had more time to use data. I, I, I find it a frustration that, that institutional research is not done enough in school systems, so that we have data to make decisions. What I would really like to implement at some point is a statistical abstract of a school district, and that's something that I would advocate for here. And what I mean by a statistical abstract is, is a common set of data that go back for, ideally for ten years. So you can track lots of different things. Tax rate, student enrollment, student performance on various indicators. It's very difficult to use data at the superintendent level unless it goes back for multiple years, particularly in the very small districts where I've worked. Data's got, is a little more robust in a slightly larger district like Oyster River. But you really need to look longitudinally at, at most data. At the building principal level and at the teacher level, however, data's taken on a completely different role than it did even ten years ago in schools. And largely, that's because of, of response to intervention becoming pretty much the norm of the land. Response to intervention came about as there was, there were concerns that students were being identified as having disabilities, and were being put into what were sometimes unfortunately dead-end programs that they came into and never came out of, and never got caught up to their peers, when there was doubt as to whether or not they really had an educational disability, or whether or not they simply had missed instruction somewhere along the line. They had had poor instruction, they'd had gaps in their learning. And response to intervention initially started as a, as a scientifically-based method to identify students that were not progressing on the trajectory that would ultimately suggest success, trying multiple interventions for short periods of time, and tracking very closely student improvement. So that if multiple interventions are tried, and none of them are working, then it tells you there's something else going on. It's, it's not a lack of instruction that's causing them being behind. And that's when people were encouraged to take a look at whether or not there was an underlying disability. That's how it started. It's now become a, pretty much a way of teaching. And, and it's starting to be implemented here. But each of the principals said, yeah, we're getting started on that, we're definitely excited about it, but we're not there yet. A lot of being, a lot of data is being used here. That's a particular way that data is used for individual students that, that the people I've talked to today say, we've got some more steps to take on that. And I would be very excited about that, because that goes back to what I said about talking about each student. It's not that aggregate data about how students are doing. It's very rigorous data collection and interventions for individual students, and tracking at the building level, individual student progress.
Thank you.
Okay, another question for you. Describe for us your management style in working with others. How do you help focus goals into action plans?
I, I think those that, that read the, the business literature more than I would describe my leadership style as distributed leadership. style as distributed leadership. I think it's very important for individuals to know what decisions they have responsibility and authority for and to know what they don't have responsibility and authority for. The building principals and department heads that work with me know that when they make a decision, I will stand behind them in public. It doesn't matter how bad it was. They are my employee and I will stand behind them. What I say to them in private may be a different matter and I may tell them that I don't ever want to have that experience again of them making that decision. But if a decision is at their level, then I will support them. And if they make a decision that I'm uncomfortable with, then it's responsible and my responsibility is to indicate to them why I was not comfortable with that decision and to help them identify how to handle things differently. This has come up in one of my districts in the last couple of years in which we had a member of the community who really wanted a policy change, badly wanted a policy change, and the board did not support that policy change. That individual now happens to be on the board and the board has chosen to make that policy change. And I had, I did not recommend it. It was not my professional recommendation, but that's the board's decision to make that policy change. I had staff members who, when the board adopted the policy and I told them what their responsibility was, said they didn't want to do it. And I said, that's fine that you don't want to do it. I'm telling you, you have to do it because that's the board policy. And if you would like to communicate back to me that you're unhappy with the fact you need to do it, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with it if you communicate back to the board that you're not happy with it. But if you don't do it, then you will be insubordinate to me and I will handle that as a case of insubordination because you don't get to make that policy call, the board does. I even advise the board against it. But once the board's made a decision, it's my job to implement the policy. And so people at every level need to know who gets to make what decision and they need to respect that person. And as I've said multiple times today about full-day kindergarten, when I moved into the district where I am now, I told them that it looked to me that full-day kindergarten was something that was necessary for students and that I would advocate for it every year in my budget. In all three of the districts, full-day kindergarten will be in my budget every year. But I also told them that if the board decides not to put it in their budget, you won't hear a word from me until the next year when it's in my budget again because the board gets to make that call. And if the public, if the board supports it and the public doesn't support it, the public gets to make that call. And you won't hear from me about it again. I'm not going to complain about it or say that we're not doing what's right for kids, but when I bring in my next budget, it's going to be in there because that's where my role and responsibility is, is to advise on the budget and then it's to act on the budget based upon the people that provide leadership to me.
Cody.
What has student involvement in decision-making looked at your previous, or looked like at your previous schools? And how do you incorporate student input in the Oyster River Cooperative School District?
It's really interesting in Wiscasset where I was first superintendent, one of the board members had been the student representative to the board only, I think, two years prior. She had gone off to college and run for the board and was now holding a regular voting seat. So that having been said, the student voice in Wiscasset because of Sarah's role on the board was huge. She was a tremendous advocate for students and brought obviously firsthand information. I found it, I have found it a lot easier to get student input that I could really work with in my first superintendency than my second because in my current one, I don't have a high school. I have two K-6 schools and one K-8 school. So the level of information that I can actually get that's actionable from K-6 and K-8 students, not that I don't love to interact with them and I don't ask them questions when I can, but I don't get a lot that I can act on. When I had a high school, I was involved with the students to the extent that they wanted me to as much as I was able. I tried not to impose myself. In fact, I think I can say that I didn't impose myself on them. But when I was invited, they knew that I was always happy to be invited and I would always try to attend and I would listen and bring their ideas back to the board like I would bring any other member of the community. I talk to community members all the time and a student, a student communication carries equal weight to any other member of the community. If it's about, not specifically about student matters, if it specifically relates to student matters, then of course it carries a much higher weight.
Krista.
I'm going to ask two because we skipped over one. You're doing great, by the way. We're only halfway through and we're three-quarters of the way through the question.
Great. So I can really just sit back and talk on this one.
How, this might not be the one you want to work through. How have you worked through conflict resolution when there is disagreement?
Boy, I keep telling the same story all day today, but you know, it's the one that helps you understand how I work through conflict resolution. When I first got my first position at the Council for Exceptional Children in Washington, my predecessor was developing a national symposium to bring together leaders of the field of gifted education and leaders of the field of middle-level education because at that point, there was a real disconnect and a perception of a lot of folks leading the middle-school movement in this country that gifted education was somehow anathema to the middle-school model. And when I sat down at that desk, one of the first things I discovered was a multi-page document that had a lot of information about the leaders in middle-level education in this country. And lots of marginalia, lots of notes about what they'd said, what they'd written, what they'd done. But there was one name on that list of, I don't know, 40 or 50 names that didn't have anything written on it except the big word "no" written across the whole thing. And I said, well, that's the first person I need to invite right there. And I didn't just pick up the phone, but I went back and read their work and they were a very, very harsh critic of gifted education, but they were an honest critic. And so I started putting together this symposium by saying, I need you at this symposium in order to make any difference. Now, that person did participate and I think it was very, very helpful for the future of gifted students in the middle-school. He didn't leave that four-day experience an advocate for gifted education, but he did have some relationships in the field and they had relationships with him. I think there were some people from the gifted education field that thought that he was a mean person who didn't like kids who excelled or had the capability to excel and that wasn't the case at all. They got to know that he had strongly held beliefs and had personal experiences that led him to those beliefs. And he was a very honest critic. And he had an annual conference that had many hundreds of participants every year that he held in Florida and a couple of years later, he invited Dr. Joe Ranzilli from UConn, one of the biggest five names in gifted education, to come to his conference and present. And he invited me to come and facilitate a discussion between he and Dr. Ranzilli at a plenary session of his conference. He was a very, very honest critic, a harsh critic, but an honest critic. And I think that the way to resolve conflict is to pull the people together that are having the conflict, try to put them into environments that are not pressure-packed, put them away from pressure and give them an opportunity to develop relationships. They don't have to become friends, they don't have to agree on anything, but you have to develop a dialogue between people that disagree in order to have any opportunity to move forward. So my short answer to that would be, you've got to get together with the people that are your harshest critics. If I think about board members, you know, I think about in Wiscasset, Doug Smith was probably my most vocal critic on the Wiscasset School Board. He's one of the few members of the school board that I've talked to since I left there. I really respect him. Things we agreed on, we worked, we worked very, very hard together on the things we agreed on. There were some things we disagreed on, but we didn't let the disagreements keep us from working together when we agreed and we did some very successful work together and I'm pleased with my relationship with Doug.
Another question. What is your approach to professional development? How do you assess teachers and what mentoring strategies have you had success with?
Well, how do I assess teachers? I would not assess teachers. I would help the administrative team look at their assessment process and they would assess teachers. And this goes back to who has what role and responsibility. What I would be doing was, would be, I would be working with the administrators on my review of their assessments. And there are a number of things I'm looking for in assessments. I'm looking for assessments that give people constructive feedback. I'm looking for assessments that allow me as a superintendent to know where there are areas of challenge and where there are areas of great success. If I look at evaluations and they all look like they were cut from the same cookie cutter, then I'm not happy with that. So what we have done in SAU 13 over the last 18 months or so is we've been working to align our evaluation process to our professional development process so that one's evaluation would help drive one's professional development. My approach to professional development is like a lot of superintendents, I'm frustrated with it. We have people out of the classroom a lot getting professional development and our students are the ones that sometimes suffer for not having their instructors there. So I'm frustrated that professional development that's offered is so often offered during school days. People have to have professional development, they need it. I wish that we could change the way it's offered in our state and in the country, so it was largely offered on weekends. Because if you look at the number of staff days that are out over the school year, I think it has a real, real effect upon students. The best staff development is embedded in the workplace. You get a lot more bang for your buck if you have somebody coming into your school who provides professional development to your teachers or staff and then has a chance to come in and work with them in the classroom and help them with implementation. Because these one-shot professional development deals, sometimes they're really valuable, sometimes they're really not. And it's not always easy to predict until you shell out your money and you leave the classroom to a substitute for a day and you go out and you come back and say, ah, I didn't get anything that's really going to help me. So it's a frustration and that's something I would certainly work with the administrative team to talk about what's working for them. Sending teams, if you can, is more effective than sending individuals in most cases so that you've got some opportunity for people to have mutual support as they attempt to implement what they learned.
Thank you.
Anne.
Hello, Anne. How would you take our district, which we proudly consider to be a great district, and make it even greater in the face of declining enrollment, increasing community demand for enhanced programming, and limited resources?
Enhanced programming, when you've got declining enrollment and limited resources, is a stretch. But you've got to start by making sure that every dollar that you're spending is being spent maximally to affect student programming. A big frustration of mine is that district money ends up paying for procedural mistakes, whether those are going out to attorneys, whether they're spent on facilities because we have been shortsighted in facilities management. I actually learned today that there is a long-term facility study that exists and if it's on the website, I missed it. I looked at a lot of things, I wish I had seen that. That's tremendously important. I think, as I said about strategic planning, it's important for school administrators to know what their area of expertise is and know what it isn't. And parts of school leadership that are outside of the immediate expertise, when you're in a community that has a fine university, the expertise in almost anything we could want is right down the street. So for me, who's been an educator all my life, to develop a facilities plan for you is not a good use of my time because it's going to take me 10 times as long and you're not going to get as good a report. And somewhere down the line, I'm not going to have noticed that you needed a boiler replaced and you're going to need it in the middle of the winter and it's going to cost you twice as much money. So I think there are some functions that are not core that you should on a regular cyclical basis be having outside review of. Transportation systems is an example. Facilities management is an example. Food service operations is an example. You've got to bring in the expertise. If you want to have your students excel, every dollar possible needs to be going into the classroom and into programming. Every dollar possible means every dollar that the community can support. So this is all within the context of sustainability and what the community can bear. But it really frustrates me when dollars are spent on extraneous things that could be going into classrooms.
The next one. How can you reach out? And how have you reached out? And how will you reach out to the community to welcome participation? And how will you leverage our vast community resources, including our residents, businesses, and UNH?
I think, and I even gave you the lead-in, right? Turning on my phone when I sat down. I think we have to turn it around and ask what we as a school system can provide to the community. How can we provide for businesses in the community? How can we support the university? What do we have to offer? One of the things that we have to offer is we have opportunities for student teachers. I saw a lot of wonderful interns and student teachers. And we need to be showing that we are a part of the community and that we want to provide our wonderful students and the expertise that we have on our staff and in our students to the community. And you need to be out there, you need to show up where people are and you need to talk with them. I've mentioned a couple of times that there was a group of folks when I was in Wiscasset that I fondly refer to as the curmudgeons. It was a few men who, you know, didn't have much positive to say about very many things and particularly were rightfully concerned about the fact that they were living on fixed incomes and that faculty and staff continued to get raises by collective bargaining agreements and they were struggling with their tax rates. And I built relationships with those guys. I didn't agree with them about a lot, about many things relating to school, but there were several occasions in which they would be standing outside the Wiscasset newspaper offices, which I drove by every day on the way to work. And there were not a lot of times, but there were three or four times that I had a little time in my schedule that I just stopped. And I just got out and just stood there and shot the breeze with them. I think you've got to be a part of the community and you've got to put yourself into environments in which you meet those people. And if every time you talk to them, you're asking for something, then the perception is that the school system is just trying to suck whatever they can out of the community. You've got to try to be there to the extent that you can, even when you're not asking for something. And that's not always easy to do because we're very busy people. One of the ways to do that is to be in the community. I will not make any promises about my family decisions because my wife has an equal share in those decisions, but both of the places where I've been a superintendent, I have moved my family into town and I have found suitable places to live and I've been able to pay taxes in the communities that pay my salary. And it would be my intent if I become your superintendent to start looking in that direction. And that means that you're in the local stores. People see you. I bring my dollars to spend in my community. And when I go in, I don't preach about school. I don't ask what they can do for the school. I just show up and I spend my money and I show my face. And I think that's more important when the time comes that I am asking for a favor or there's something they can do for me, is that they've seen me around and they know that that's not my modus operandi, it's just to ask for things. I'm really a member of the community.
Good. Jim.
Could you please tell us what educational models or instructional practices that you feel best meets student needs?
Educational models? Well, I've referenced RTI, I've referenced early intervention through full-day kindergarten programming, which may or may not be what is needed here. That would take further study. A model that's not an educational model that I find fascinating, that I've been doing some reading on, is the School of Positive Psychology. It was started by a professor at the University of Pennsylvania, Martin Seligman, I don't know, 10, maybe 15 years ago, when he was president of the American Psychological Association. And in his presidential address, he basically said, the field of psychology is 100 years old. And I apologize, Dr. Seligman, if you ever see this. I'm trying to paraphrase your great address. address. Our field is 100 years old, and we basically spent 100 years studying human dysfunction. And as of my presidential address, I'm establishing the field of positive psychology, which is the study of human function. And what is it that we, as a profession, can offer to move people toward higher function rather than just trying to move people out of dysfunction? And a whole body of literature has developed over the last 10 years about positive psychology. And there's a whole branch of it that talks about schools. And yet I have not personally experienced any implementation of a positive psychology-based program within schools. So when I think about things that intrigue me, that I would want to have the administrative team doing some reading about, that could be implemented in schools, that could have a real positive effect for students, it's the idea of how do you take an individual from where they are and help them become more psychologically successful so that they can be more successful in everything else that they do.
Since we have some time left, are there any questions you'd like to ask this board?
I'm not sure if this is a question or not. Let me get started, and we'll see if there's a question in there. I'm aware that this board is taking some heat. It is not my role, I have no opinion about the heat that you're taking. Being a school board member is a very, very difficult job. And I think that the experiences I have, particularly the ones in Washington, working for a large international organization that was nonpartisan, that involved going in and meeting with all sorts of members of Congress, leaders from around the country that agreed or disagreed, and trying to bring people together to help craft policy that would move students forward regardless of whether or not there were strong disagreements, regardless of whether or not there was even anger. I like to think that that experience of mine could help you. And I guess if I were trying to make a question out of that, I guess I would just ask the question of whether or not, I think I know the answer, this board is committed to hearing from all parties in the community and hearing from friend and critic alike, and learning from all of those voices in order to move the district forward. Because I think if you are, then I can help you get through that and move back to giving you an opportunity to lead without having to feel the pressure that you're feeling now. I think you have enough challenge with your roles that I think with some support that you can move forward for the whole community without feeling the sorts of backlash that you're feeling for the very difficult work that you do.
Anyone want to take?
I love.
Okay.
If I don't start coughing. Dennis hooked me up with some cough drops, but no, sorry, my asthma is horrible today, I don't know why. So I think that we do have an issue in our community that people aren't necessarily being heard of all avenues. I think there are some people who are intimidated about speaking up about their opinions in our community for a variety of reasons. Whether they're intimidated by the board, intimidated by the community, intimidated by the schools, I don't know. Or it's different for all people. But I think it would be helpful for our community to have an avenue where everyone could come express their opinions openly and be welcome to do so, and then work together within those communities to find the right way for our district to move forward. I think that, I've said it before, and I truly do believe it, that regardless of opinions and differences of opinions in our community, we all want to get to the same place. We all want to get our students to the most excellent district they could possibly get to and get the most out of their school that we could possibly give them. It's just a difference of opinion on how to get there and what we need. And I don't know that we're ever going to come up with an answer to make everyone happy, but I would like to get to a point where everyone feels comfortable expressing those opinions, and we can hear them all clearly, and then make a decision to move forward.
Jim?
If you walked into a district and you were told that there existed a culture of distrust, how would you go about trying to eliminate and resolve that?
I think that, Krista, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Stated it well in saying that some people are not comfortable bringing their ideas forward in a public forum. So what I would try to do is I would try to identify pockets of common perception and try to set up opportunities to meet individually with those groups in a homogeneous setting so that if there's a population that thinks all we should be teaching is Spanish, then don't meet with that group, with the people that say we also should have French and Chinese. Go and meet with that whole group so that they know it's safe for them to express their opinion. And I think meeting with smaller groups that have common perceptions and really hearing them and reflecting, but then going back to what I said earlier and helping them understand who has what role in the process. You're a community group that really wants X, so as a community group, how can I advise you to advance your cause? And I will advise every community group with professional integrity of how is a process to advance their cause, because ultimately, it's the community that makes the decisions for the schools. And if this little group that starts over here and meets with me this year about their cause grows and grows and grows, and ultimately, they end up getting what they need, then it's because the community has moved in that direction. So I would give honest advice to everybody about their cause, including, you know, I mentioned earlier about a member of the community that wanted a policy change that ultimately got on the board and got that change. When that person was a member of the community, they talked to me, and I didn't agree with the policy change. But I advised them on, if I wanted a policy change, here's the process that I would suggest going through. And as your superintendent, I will help you every step of the way to bring your recommendation to the board, and we'll see what the board wants to do with it. So I would say, don't try to have large public fora. Try to have smaller groups that are more homogeneous in their interests, and give them my full attention for certain periods of time so they know that I'm willing to support whatever they want, but within my role.
I like that.
Yes. Thank you.
I just wanted to answer your question and give you some of my own opinions. Absolutely, I think I personally, as a board member, welcome a variety of opinions. And we actually have had some public forums, and I found them to be incredibly constructive. I attended all of them at all the schools, and I heard a lot of dissenting people who may not agree with my views, and I took it to heart. And I think as being, you know, representatives of our district, it's our responsibility to listen, to digest, and consider a variety of opinions. So I can tell you at least, you know, I expect to still be on the board when the new superintendent comes on, and I have that open mind. What I, my observation is that one of the biggest, I guess, problems we have is we lack the strategic plan. We just are at the beginning phases. I think a strong leader in the form of a superintendent will help bring together all the constituent groups, help us outline the roadmap for the future. And if we all know, we're all looking at that same map, we know where we're going. We may not agree on the how and the when, but we can work through that and the implementation of the plan. So I look forward to leadership helping guide us with a strategic plan that would, I think, help resolve some of the conflicts. That's something that I would hope for and look for in leadership.
That's really important. You really need to have a strategic plan, and you may find that some little group over here only has an interest in one little cell on their strategic plan. And sometimes people don't get involved in the strategic planning process or another process because they're overwhelmed by the scope of it. But they might have a lot to offer about one little cell. So how do we get the information from them and make sure that that's represented in each little part of the strategic plan? It's a tremendous amount of work to do it. But if it's done right, then everybody should say, "My voice shows up somewhere in there." Now, I know in 1997, when we were working on the reauthorization of IDEA, the law that oversees special education, I know in that law the words that came from my computer. I know, because they were things that were priorities of mine and that had lots of priorities. Many of them didn't end up in there, many of them got incorporated by others, or many other people had the same idea. But there are a couple of little concepts in there that I know came from me. And I feel really good about that whole law, in part because there's just a little bit... Of Jay McIntyre.
Jim, Joslyn.
I think a useful tool for you would be to implement, as you suggested, reliable and consistent outreach that takes into consideration the importance of communication and that part of that communication is being receptive to feedback and then recommunicating how that feedback's been used. Our community is vocal, is passionate, and is frustrated. Often, they don't feel like their thoughts and concerns are heard.
Yeah.
And partly, that's because there's no evidence that's been heard.
Yeah.
And there's no evidence that it's been taken to heart and even implemented. So that would be my advice to you.
Thank you.
Yes, Joslyn.
To go back to your original question, I think, you know, my fellow board members are doing a good job in answering it. But, you know, certainly this board has had some opportunities for feedback through, we've mentioned focus groups for this search, but also just general focus groups when the interim superintendent arrived. So there has been, I think, a lot of listening, but I think where this board could use help in any board, because the board, you know, if you were hired, will not be this room, you know, because, you know, I'll certainly be gone and other people, we just don't know. So I think the real challenge for a leader is how do you frame a constructive and respectful conversation in the community? And I think that has not happened yet necessarily, or I'm having trouble seeing evidence of that. So I think that's where this board or any board would look to a leader to go out and create the framework for constructive conversation and demand civility, I think. Because without those pieces, it's a lot of noise.
Yeah.
But it's not a lot of actionable items. And so I think that would be a key challenge, and I think that's probably true of any board.
One of the daunting parts about getting community input is that as the leader sitting on the board, it's important, as you said, to go to everything that you can. But you can't practically do that. And that goes back to what I said earlier about really defining the roles. What is the role of the board that's unique? What is the role of the superintendent that's unique? We have building principals in the room. Some community forums only affect what happens at the building level. I don't need to be there. They don't have to wait for my schedule or your schedule to do that. If we really know what our roles and responsibilities are, then the advice comes up from the building principal to the superintendent. But the building principal doesn't have to have their hands tied because the superintendent isn't available to do a community forum. If the community forum is about something that relates to their school, it's within their scope, they need to go out and get that information. I can't be expected, you can't be expected, to be at everything. Where the community needs to give input on policy and on budgets, on the things that are the responsibility of the board, then you have to be there, and it has to be somehow around your schedule.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. I want to thank everybody today for their hospitality. I would have a lot more questions if it weren't for the volume of information that's available publicly on your school system. Your website has a ton of information. I was able to answer a lot of questions myself. A lot of people that spent a lot of time with me today were very helpful, and I've enjoyed the process. I did have a question earlier from a member of the community about whether this process has been markedly different than the others I participated in. And the answer to that is no, not from a candidate standpoint. I have no idea what it's been beyond a candidate standpoint. But from a candidate standpoint, once an application period closes, things happen quickly. I mean, you move, you make a decision, and you hire somebody. So I just want the audience that's watching to also be aware that, from my perspective, this has been a very normal process, it's been a very respectful and open process, and I've enjoyed it very much. I hope whoever you hire is exactly the right person for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What are we going to have next?
Oh, okay. First of all, thank you so much for your time. This was really wonderful. So as I mentioned earlier, next in the process, we have two additional candidates coming forward tomorrow. We'll be going through all the steps, and then the board will be meeting on Thursday to determine what to do.
Might take us a little bit longer because we might add things.
Absolutely.
Just due diligence.
Absolutely. I look forward to hearing from you.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor of adjournment? We're actually adjourned.